Somebody with the town ought to do something about that. I promised fiber to every home in Franklin.
Well, we want to get this underway and thank everybody that has come out and supported the town candidates and support, obviously, the municipal elections. We want to welcome our candidates here. We'll go from this side of the table over. Jimbo Letford, Francis C., David Culpepper, along with Stacy Guffey and Rita Satt. There, in the corner. And the candidates will have a minute each to do an opening statement and then we'll go into questions. We have questions here, about seven or eight of them, that were submitted via email and also via Facebook over the past couple of weeks. And we'll randomly choose questions. We'll do five questions and each candidate will have two minutes apiece to answer each question. Dave, over in the corner, will have a two-minute timer, a one-minute timer for the opening statement, so we'll keep everybody in line. And I believe that's all the announcements, so we'll go ahead and get started. Oh, yeah, we're going to start with Rita and we'll go around and pass the mic for each question. So we'll start with you, Rita. You've got a minute to tell folks why you're running for town council.
Thank you. My name is Rita and I'm from Franklin and I'm very happy to be back in these mountains and back in my hometown. I grew up right off of Main Street in Franklin. And I'm running because I think there's more that we can do to improve our town. I think it's a great place to live and to work and to visit, but I think there's more that we can do, especially through cooperation and collaboration. I think there's a lot of plans that have been laid out for the town that we need to work harder on implementation. The town of Franklin is the heart of Macon County and we have a lot of assets that we can bring to bear and even more that we can bring to bear if we layer those assets and work collaboratively one route toward another. So that's, and I'm running for town council because I think I can help with that. So there you have it. Vote for me.
All right. Thanks, Rita. All right, Stacy Guffey.
It's been my philosophy in the last 20 years of public service to want to give back to the place that's given so much to my family over the generations. And what better way to do that than to serve on a board where the elected officials that are there now are there for the right reasons? The people up here who are running for that office are here for the right reasons. They all have a heart for Franklin. And I believe that my experience over the past 20 years in the nonprofit sector, in the private sector and government sector have qualified me for this position and I would appreciate your vote.
David Culpepper.
Hello, my name is David Culpepper. I'm on the council. I'm running for my second term. I was born and raised in Franklin. Pretty much my position is I would rather be outside at any given time than inside pretty much anywhere. And that's what I advocate for on this board is getting people outside and letting them enjoy the bowl of beauty that is Franklin. Hence why I have a neck beard and long hair because I don't want to shave and go get my hair cut. I told my daughter I'd tell a dad joke, so here's my dad joke. A politician walks into a bar and there's a really long line. That's punchline.
Well, I have to follow back. And I'm not talking about long hair and neck hair either. I suggest not some long hair. But my name is Francis C. I was born and raised here in Franklin. I own a home in the city limits now. And I was approached at a point by a friend of mine group and that had asked me if I would consider running for town council when Barbara Carey passed. And I thought about it and I talked to my family about it and they all told me no. And then I said, okay, I'm going to do it anyway because that's the way I am. When my family tells me no, I do it again. But one of the things I look for in this seat if I'm elected is a responsible progression, things being done. You know, I want to fix something. I teach kindergarten and even if it's a boo-boo, I want to fix it. So I'm looking forward to serving. I think that's a word that we all have is service here and doing the best we can with what we have to work with in our town, which is a lot, has a lot of great assets.
All right, thank you, Francis. All right, Jimbo.
Thank you very much. My name is Jimbo Letford and I'm a long-time resident of Franklin. I'm also, and I'm proud of that, I'm also proud to say that I was raised on the west coast in Oregon and spent some time in Florida. So I have experienced more of the world than Franklin, North Carolina, much like everyone else at this table. And I'm proud of that also. I believe I bring some new ideas and even some ideas from the future. Like I said, I've been to the west coast of the United States. And I'm going to take Father David's seat again. I'm going to try to keep a mic tonight. I've answered all these questions seriously and you can find those answers on my Facebook page at Jimbo Plumbing or Jimbo Letford. Why do I want to join, be part of the town council? I want to be part of the town council because I was told once that to be truly successful, you had to surround yourself with people smarter than you. And until now and until recently, as I've been involved with the town council, I found that really hard to do in Franklin. No offense, Jason.
All right, that's the opening statements for all of our town council members and we'll move to the question and answer section. We'll get two minutes here to answer some questions and we'll randomly pick them here from our bucket of questions. All right. You ready, Dave, with the timer? Two minutes? You feel like Bob Barker in the showcase showdown over there?
Do you want to just walk each question? Go this way on the starter?
We can do that, yeah. That'll work. All right, well, Dave, while you get it all set over there, I'll go ahead and read the longest question that I believe we have. Recently, several alternative options for the future of Whitmire property have been discussed. What is your position on these options or do you have your own plan to present to the town? So Stacy, we'll begin with you.
That's a great question. First of all, I'm really happy to see that we're going to get a skate park. I think the Whitmire property is a good spot for that skate park. I think there's a place for recreation on the Whitmire property. There have been several studies conducted about the future of that property, some of which I was involved in. And I think there's an opportunity to do recreation. And then on the part of that property that fronts the Highland Road, what I would like to do is see the town do a request or proposal for development of mixed use to make that an anchor of the Highland Road.
All right. David Culpepper, I'll read the question one more time. Several alternative options for the future of Whitmire property have been discussed. What is your position on these options or do you have a plan to present to the town? David?
In a land far, far away, in a time four years ago, there was a bunch of no trespassing signs and a burned-down house up there. And the people who owned the land, the residents of Franklin, were not allowed to go on that land at all. Through some advocacy and some people who are smarter than me and more capable than me, we got a disc golf course put on there and the town started mowing it. And there's a skate park that is slated to be put there and I really hope that comes to fruition. Hope we don't drop the ball on that one. I'd like us to get some more recreation. I would like to copy the Cachers Village Green model and they have a little bit of recreation, some pavilions. But they do a really good job of recruiting art festivals there. They have several throughout the summer, fall and spring that are very, very popular and are very successful. I have artists that come to my store to buy supplies to go to festivals like the Cachers Art Festival and they wonder why there's not one in Franklin. Whitmire could be that kind of facility. I mean, it could be where the farmer's market is. It could be so many things. I just want to keep steering it towards permanent recreation and use of the people. And I think we're going in that direction. I hope we are anyway.
All right, thank you, David. Francis?
Well, first of all, I've been in that house before it was burnt out. In fact, I have a piece of slate from their, their old sidewalk that I got from their son. I knew E.J. and his name, my dad worked for him. And knowing that family the way I do, I think that they would want something for the residents of Franklin and Macon County as a whole to be able to use. A recreation facility, art projects, movies, you know, in the summer, a pavilion for picnics, all that would be what they would want. And I think that, you know, we want progression and we want things to be better, but we have to remember that that has memories of people. And those people are people that I know and have known for years, grew up knowing. And it's a beautiful piece of land with a history of giving. I don't know if you knew Mr. Whitmire, but he is responsible for the Western Carolina University football field. He did so many projects around our area. He was a philanthropist more than anything, so he would want that to be used for something for everyone. So art shows, all that would be right what they would want. And I'm going to put my hat in there and say that's what I would like to have too. And I would work to help do anything. We do need someone, I think, to be responsible for calendar events. We've got to have that development director kind of position from coming in some way, whether it be volunteer or some organization or someone paid.
All right, thank you, Francis. All right, Jimbo.
I love what's happening on Whitmire property. And when David talks about getting toward his now through advocacy, I'm proud to say that I was a big part of that advocacy. We presented ideas to the town about cleaning it up and we argued about it being close to the public. I mean, those are the words that came right out of my mouth. So, and I'm not trying to toot my horn, but I am. We're here trying to hear your vote and I want to say that a lot of the things that happen, are happening there right now are a part of a plan that we designed on our own for free years ago that the town had double-checked and they paid $13,000 to be told the same exact thing that we told them for free as advocates of the community only. So I like what's going on and I want to see it continue. I like what they said. I think there's some room for camping. I think that when we start having some large townwide festivals, we're going to need lots of room to park cars and there's a car camp, lots of room there for car camping. There's lots of room for tank camping. There's lots of room out back for sending them some RVs, some upper-scale camping. So there's lots of uses for it. Ultimately, I'd like to see it stay as green as possible, as open as possible for art shows and anything. There's a great spot there up front by the Highland Road where it's just a natural amphitheater. You could put a stage that backs up to the Ponte D'Esse Tire and the whole rest of it is just an open block where you can sit and jam them out. There's a bank on the backside. It's pretty unusable, but that area would be great for some trails and some butterfly watching and some, maybe some dog walker dog and some planting. You could have some beds and you could teach people how to grow their own food. There's a lot of stuff that could happen out there that I think would fit everything that everybody else wants to see also.
All right, thank you, Jimbo.
Well, I did know the Whitmire family as well and Steve is still very active over the mountain, Steve Whitmire. But I love that it's a green space. I'm grateful for those who worked hard to get it opened up so that people could use it. One of the smart development strategies is to leave as much green space as you can. But I also think that we ought to think about some of the needs that Franklin has business-wise and is there a place along that road that might be very compelling for businesses? And so that, you know, the idea that Stacy mentioned about having an RFP process, that makes sense to me. But I do think that we've got to have places for people to play and I believe we've got a lot in Franklin and we need to publicize them better. We need to have art shows here and I think that that would be a great place for that. But over time, I think we need to really think about the mixed-use development on that land. And I'd love to see how much the recreation, how much it's being used currently. And then if we put the skate park there, how much that's used? Because I think utilization and what our population will use is very important. So anything that we do, I think we should evaluate it carefully and then look at the resources and how many of our people would use it. I've had friends that say that you've got to push for a picnic shelter. So we'd like a picnic shelter there. I think that it's a beautiful place and you can overlook some of the Franklin, you can overlook some of the river. So I think there's a lot to be said for what development goes there and to do it very carefully and evaluate each and every option.
Thank you. Thank you, Rita. Do we have follow-ups? You're the timer. We can get, what, 30 seconds? 30 seconds, we can get followed if you'd like to comment.
The one thing I would say is that in a downtown context, that's a fairly big piece of property. You're looking at 12 acres, you know, so there's room for a lot of different uses and I'm all for recreation. But I'm also for us reinvesting in some of our existing recreation areas that are in disrepair before we start to build new ones.
Anybody else? Follow-up? All right, David?
We only have one park. Whitmire makes the second one. I think we can hold at least two.
I sort of count more parks, but I'm not. But one of the points, and we've seen it here, we've seen it other places, there's a point about maintenance. You know, if you build a skate park and then it's not well taken care of, it falls into disarray. And then we're back here in a few years saying, hey, Whitmire property looks terrible. Well, we don't, we won't do all of that. I mean, that, we want to, but we have to be, as Rita said, very careful in our planning, very careful in how maybe hours of operation and how the town takes care of it.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to our next question, second question of five, selected randomly here. All right, we'll start with David, who'll be first to answer this question. Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the town council board? David?
It's funny, you should ask. This, what we just talked about, and I was just scribbling that down while I was diligently paying attention to your question. If you don't invest in your infrastructure and upkeep your infrastructure, it falls into disarray. That is exactly correct. If you don't invest in your community, it falls into disarray and it starts to rot and it makes the fabric of your community rot. And unfortunately, I think that has been the fruits of our previous 30 years labor in this town and in this county. We've invested so much into getting tourists here and getting retirees here. We have completely abandoned making this place a livable place for young adults, people who could enter the workforce and we could have a workforce here, which we don't currently. Jimbo mentions the trades a lot. That would be fantastic. We have a community college here that we can really rely on. If we had more younger people going there, it could grow. So that's it. It's 100% livability. We've got to make this a more attractive place for younger folks to live here. I sat in a meeting one time with an expert on downtowns and they said, the surefire way to know if your town's a success, your downtown's a success, is if there's lights on on the upper floors of downtown. We're slowly getting there, slowly, but it's going to take more than tourists and retirees to get us there. We've got to focus on the livability of the town. Stuff like Whitmire, skate parks, recreation, immediate, out the door, after work, I can take my kids there, recreation, that's the kind of thing we need to focus on. We need to focus on people living here, not just people coming here.
All right, thank you, David. Francis, I'll repeat the question. Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the town council?
A particular issue? Maybe not. There's several issues. One of them is economics. I'm a firm believer right now in that everywhere's hiring, then we're not working. So we have to get that part of our county, as they could say, we have to make it a place people actually live. Because until you're making a living and you have a home and you have enough food, you're not going to recreate. You can't afford to go recreate. So we've got to look at some of those hard issues and find some things for that. You know, we like to paint our town in the best possible light and I agree with that, except there are things that we need to look at. We've talked about sidewalks, we've talked about curb appeal with our town. There are some real issues that need work fixing and we have to concentrate on some of that also. Not that I have anything against recreation or ball or skate parks or anything, I do not. I think that's wonderful that we can step that far ahead. But I do want to look at some other issues, have responsible progression with what resources our town has, with what our tax money's going for. If you live in town or have a business in town, how's my money being spent to help me also? Is it being spent responsibly for children, for families, for transportation, for our infrastructure? So I think looking at the hard issues too is one of the reasons that I want to run.
All right, thank you, Francis. Jimbo, you've got two questions.
George, can you repeat the question?
Yes, I can repeat the question. Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the town board?
Originally, the issue was just the inaction of our local government to proceed with so many things and so much potential I thought the town had. But lately, it's been different than that. It seems like things have been changing and moving forward in that direction. So I just kind of wanted to jump on that train. I see things happening and I see them. When we talk about leaving land for green space, to me, that is progress. That is progressing. We're not talking about putting the factory there, trying to sell it to somebody to run. So that is progress. So I think the town is progressing. I see a lot of progress around us and I just was frustrated at first with seeing all these things that we had in our town, all these wonderful pieces to build this great, this puzzle, to build just a great picture. And I want to be part of that. And I think that there was a misunderstanding between something I said about David. I didn't, was not disagreeing with him about focusing on our people here first. What I said was that when you focus on your people first, you build such a good community that when tourists come here and they see what you've built, they in turn end up becoming your newest residents. So when you look out for your residents, you're looking out for your tourists, which in turn is looking out for your future residents. That's what I was saying. I definitely think community should be first, but when you build a good community and people come here and see that, they're going to move here. So that's what I'm thinking. And we do have some big issues and I have some big ideas that I'd like to run. I believe in the trades and I believe big time in the union. And I think that there, we could unionize our town in a way that maybe we could have some kind of group health insurance, group healthcare. I have serious ideas too, but I also have fun ideas.
All right, thank you, Jimbo. Let's send it on down to Rita.
Well, the reason I threw my hat in the ring is, it's not just one reason, it's several. I do believe that public service is the highest form of service. I like government and, oh, that sounds like a weird thing to like, but that, I know that government can work for the people and people can, good governance helps move communities, states, countries forward. And so when I think about the Whitmire property or any other of our assets or rights, when I also think about how important it is that we have a strong relationship between the town council and the business community. That probably was one of my driving forces, that we, I know that there's a lot of different organizations that represent businesses, but it's not just Main Street businesses. We've got a lot of business in Franklin, a lot of people who can't vote but who have business interests in town, they own businesses. So I'm really very focused on trying to have a stronger relationship between the business community and the town government. And I think that will end up being beneficial to the people who live here. And at some point, we'll talk about affordable housing perhaps.
All right, Stacy.
I would first say that the town, I think, is really on the right track and one of the reasons I wanted to run is to be a part of that. And this room is actually a good example of that. I can't tell you how many hot sweaty nights I've sat in here in town council meetings for one reason or another and now look at it. We're in a brewery. Things have really changed. Things have progressed. Whitmire property, the area around the Quoxee sidewalk study, the comprehensive plan and that's my primary reason for running. What a great time to live in Franklin and how exciting to be a part of that.
Well, move on to our third question if anybody wants to add to that. Okay, all right, we'll move on to our third question. All right, Francis, you'll be first. What are the most important challenges facing the town of Franklin and how do you propose to address them? Francis?
Well, I am new to this political field, but I've been looking at some plans. I've been looking at past town council meeting minutes, budget, and trying to educate a little bit and I see some challenges that we have. One of them is a little bit of our roads and our sidewalks, some of our curb appeal. One of the things that I think that's going to help with that is our code officer that is in place. I think that's going to help get some of those areas cleaned up. That's a challenge in our town. I think homelessness is somewhat of a challenge. Some people think it's not as big as it is, but in town, we see these people struggling and out. I just passed a little lady and I know you can help some people some of the time and none of the people know the time, I mean, I know that, but there needs to be a better look to that. And I also see in my experience some homeless children. And whether they're sleeping in their car or couch surfing, they do not have a permanent residence. And that's something that we need to look at. That's a challenge in our town right now. You know, Stacy mentioned a while ago the challenge of getting things back, you know, out of disarray, some of our parks and some of our areas we already have. And I agree with that and adding to some of the things that are already here. I think a book wall would be wonderful down on our greenway and working with Main Spring to do something like that for children. So those are some of the challenges. I also think that maybe that whole infrastructure of town employees and town government needs a look and some things, plans made for us better than that.
All right, thank you, Francis. All right, what are the most important challenges facing the town of Franklin, Jimbo, and how do you propose to address them?
I do believe that homelessness is one of the greatest challenges that is either in Franklin now or will be in Franklin soon, as it is in the rest of the world. I believe that Franklin is an attractive place for homeless. It's right off the Appalachian Trail. We're an outdoor community. You can already look like you're homeless or, you know, just a hiker and fit right in. I don't mean that in a bad way, but people look like that, you know? They go to places that are welcoming like that and I, but I think that we have the resources to fix those problems. We have a huge building about ready to be opened down there where the hospital was. There are alternatives and I think we just need to get ahead of it. If there's 10 people, that's a huge problem, you know? People need to be, in my opinion, people in my, in general, needs to be our main focus. So if we've got a handful of people that are homeless, I think more are coming and I think we need to get ahead of that problem and I think there are ways to get ahead of that problem. And I'm going to harp on the labor force. I think the labor force is a big problem, which is another one that we can solve here. Like Stacy was talking about, I was talking about the colleges. We have the college, we have the school, we have the buildings, we have the resources, we have the tradesmen here to teach the courses. We have all the resources that we need to do whatever we finally, whatever we decide we're going to do, I think we can do. So.
Thank you, Jimbo. We'll send the mic over to Rita.
I think that the labor force, the amount of money that so many people don't make, I mean, we have a heavy burden of poverty really in Macon County and in Franklin as well. And so I think what kinds of jobs people can have and what kind of business environment we have is going to make a big difference. And so I think of the people themselves and what they have and don't have as being a major issue. I also think that blind, I mean, the so many places that we have, or not so many, but we've got places in town that have got to be cleaned up. We've got too many vacant places that are just ramshackle. I think that our sidewalks say something about our position on health and people being out and able to walk. And so I think that's a major issue. I think that the hospital, we have a serious I think that the hospital, we have a serious mental health crisis in Franklin and Macon County, drug abuse, alcohol abuse, and we have got to recruit some providers that can help us with that. And I think the hospital might be a place that we can look to, to help with a lot of our needs. I love the idea of the trades being at the hospital, look at the things that they could do, not only at the hospital, but in helping recruit other people and learning from the trades. So I think that we've got a lot of things that are going very well, but we've got some things that are really significant issues. But the poverty and getting better work, better pay for people is huge for me.
All right, thank you Rita. What are the most important challenges facing the town? Stacy?
I think everything that everyone said up here is highly important, and I agree with every issue. And I think you have to step back a little bit from these individual issues, because there's some that we can do a lot about, and some that we really can't do much about other than advocate for making them better as council members. And the way to back up from that is to have a vision for what you want your town to be, what you want it to look like, how you want it to function. And I think we're really fortunate that there have been so many processes here in the town of Franklin together, that kind of vision from the public and from the leaders, and Rita said this the other night in our other forum, that we have a lot of plans sitting around, a lot of great ideas. I think the biggest issue for me is, let's move out of that planning phase, and let's move into the doing phase, get some stuff done.
Thank you Stacy. All right, David?
Ditto that. It's in backwards order on my notes here, but yeah, pay attention to the plans we've already paid for, even if they go against sacred cows that the town and the county have honored forever. Like, we paid $90,000 for a comp plan that tells us to do something, and people just throw it out like, oh, well, that's a bad idea because we presented it this way. There are no sacred cows. Everything should be discussable, everything should be open for debate. Identity, I think, is one of our issues that we're facing. I think we're moving in the right direction though, obviously, under four years of great leadership by one council member. But, I mean, what do we want to be? I mean, do we want to be the town that still has the old guard rule under sacred cows of, you know, you're not supposed to drink alcohol in Franklin? You know, we still live in a dry county. We're going to have to assess what we want to be. Do we want to be a retirement tourist place? Or do we want to be the place where younger people want to move to? That being said, we desperately need cross-pollinization between the town council board and our other boards that represent the town. The TDA Board, Tourism Development Association, the ABC Board, and the Planning Board. When I was in the IFI, I once thought that like, everybody talked, and like, figured it out together, and that's so far away, not the case, it's not even funny. We need our boards to be talking to each other, and if that means having a representative from the council on these boards, sitting on these meetings, we need more information discussed back and forth, because there's smart people everywhere, working on these problems, working in this town, and for whatever reason, there's a lack of communication, and we need to improve that.
Would you have one rebuttal?
Just another two cents, another two cents. I do believe that one of our biggest issues is that we have plans and a lot of planning, but we have not, we don't have one thing that everybody seems to be working on. It's, there's no overarching. I mean, you can ask, where's our strategic plan for the, you know, the next 10 years in Franklin? You can find a lot of individual plans, but we've got to have a better, clearer vision, and then we can all figure out how we fit into those plans.
Thank you Rita. All right, anybody else? All right, we'll move on to question number four, and I believe Jimbo being first up on the mic, so we'll go ahead and get the mic down to Jimbo. Here's a question. What are your three main goals you've set for the town if you are elected? What are your three main goals you have set for the town of Franklin if you are elected?
I like the ideas that everybody here has. I think that the biggest thing you do is unharmed communicate. I think that that's the problem that we have in our world, and I think that we can start solving that in a small town, because we do have a lot of smart people. I know people that are in these positions, and they're there, or they should be there, they're very smart, they're very good at their jobs, and we are fortunate, but the problem is that people don't talk to each other. They don't, they don't communicate, I don't understand that. I've never had a problem with that. It's been a strong point in mind typically. So that is foreign to me, and I do think that is, that would be one of my goals, is to get some better cohesion between the people that are in charge, and the county, and the town, and the planning department, and the water and sewer, you know? Part of our water and sewer plan is on the county property, part of our water and sewer plan is on the town property, part of our, you know, it's, and yet, they don't talk to each other. So how does that work now? Not very well. So I would like to see some better communication for our town, I would like to see some vision, a clearer vision, that would be a very, a good priority, and we do have lots of good plans, I've seen the plans, and they're good plans, and most of the plans talk about doing the things that we're doing. So most of the time, I don't know what the holdup is with getting on board with those. We have a great sidewalk plan, and it looks like we have a rails, not a rails, a trail, but we have a plan to get bicycle lanes between counties, between here and Sylva, and those things seem to be happening. So things are happening, and they're happening in a way that it seems like we want to happen, so I think that we could probably just help them build more faster. I'd like to help get that vision underway for Franklin and see that going. And I would like to see, to get the trades, that's very important for me, I'd like to get something... There's already a plan made out, Graner, who's the largest manufacturer of supplies for the commercial, you know, for the commercial industries, they make like, anything, tools, bolts, nuts, stuff like that. They have a plan, it's in their best interest, they've already taken the time to write it out, and it tells you step by step how to start talking to the town, the county, how to get it happening, the schools, it's already done, the work's done.
All right, thank you Jimbo. We'll pass the mic down to Rita. What are your main goals that you've set for the town if you're elected?
Well, the first main goal is that we know what we're doing and where we're going. So the vision, what's the strategic plan? And I've lived in a small town that had a many-year plan, and they've worked it. And we have to have a plan and be working it, and people knowing what part they can play. So collaboration, and having a vision and a plan is number one, and communicating more effectively. I don't see any reason why, I mean, when David said at one meeting that he, when his kids come home, he wants to be able to go somewhere and ride a bike, I'd be using the greenway. I mean, we have so many great assets, so another of my goals would be to communicate what we have, improve our signage, let people know what's here, let people understand what we have that they could be using. And then, I still think that we've got to work on our business community, that's what brings people into towns, they'll shop more on Main Street, we've got, we've got a couple more restaurants. So being business-friendly and recognizing the economic engine that small businesses and entrepreneurs are in this town. It's huge. It's a huge asset that we have, but we need to think about what other businesses do we need, and then we can, places actually recruit businesses. They try to figure out what it is that their town needs, and figure out what assets we have, and how can we bring them into our community. And then the last thing is growing our own people that need work, like the four, not the Forest Service, the fire department, and the police department, and the professionals that we need. We need to be identifying young people and helping them get the training that they need so that they can come back home. We don't want to be an exporter of our great, our great, smart, young people, we've got to figure out how to bring them home.
All right, thank you Rita. All right, Stacy, what are your three main goals you've set for the town if you're elected?
Gosh, I wish we could all disagree on something.
Is this a debate or a forum?
Yeah, so number one for me, it goes back to the vision, is to settle on a vision for the town of Franklin, and I think, I think the vision's pretty clear in terms of the planning that's been done here, and also, you can look at the way people spend their money and spend their time in Franklin, it's clear what people argue about this place. The second is, is what's already been said about collaboration, and not only between our local governments and local boards, but also on a regional scale, because we don't live in a vacuum in western North Carolina and north Georgia. And so, cooperation with other governments, cooperation with the tribe is really important to me. A good example locally about collaboration, so I can, this is, so I can disagree on one thing. When David said we only have two parks, well, we only have two that, if we count the Whitmore property, if you say we have two green spaces, that means we only have two that the town of Franklin owns. But actually, you've got a six-mile green space in the middle of town, and what a prime area that we could collaborate with Macon County on, in maintaining that greenway, upgrading the greenway, refurbishing the greenway. And then finally, the third is getting things done. How many of us wake up every morning, look at the news, and we get depressed, and mainly because nobody in this country right now can get anything done? We're too busy fighting. And it goes back to one of my primary reasons for running for this office. The right people are at the table on this town board, the right people are in this community, and it's small enough that we can get things done.
All right, Stacy, all right. David, what are your three main goals that you've set if you're elected?
Three main goals in no particular order are, continue laying sidewalks. For the first time in 30 years, we laid sidewalks in the last few years, which I think is pretty aggressive. I mean, we still need a lot of love on some sidewalks, we need to fix a lot of them, and we need to keep laying new sidewalks. When I was a kid, I lived in town, on the outskirts of town, I had to ride my bike to town, and I had this weird route that would go through like, a church parking lot, to a sidewalk, and then cross the street, and do, I mean, it wasn't dangerous because I figured out how to not make it dangerous. So I lived one door away from the house that I was in when I was 11, 12, 13, and I'm teaching my kids that exact same route on how to get to town on their bicycle, because there's not a sidewalk any closer. And I tell them to ride on the sidewalk, because it's safer than on the road, and illegal be damned, if it's safer for my kid to ride on the sidewalk, I'm going to tell them to ride on the sidewalk. Continue to advocate for outdoor recreation, and people to be able to get outside of their house, get them off the devices, throw away your TV, get rid of your iPhone, I wish I wasn't so addicted to it. Get people outside, because that's where you connect with nature, that's where you connect with God. I mean, people need to be out of their houses more. So advocate outdoor recreation is the whole umbrella thing. We do have a lot of assets in this county. I forget how much of our county is Forest Service land, I think it's like 50%? There is a plan, somewhat in its infancy right now, to reroute the Bartram Trail from the rec park along the greenway, if we can get the greenway connected to the rec park, and then through downtown, and that would be a huge win to have a nationally recognized trail go through downtown. That being said, advocate for more uses on US Forest Service land. We have a new ranger who has a background in outdoor rec. I'd like to see some mountain biking or other activities near town on US Forest Service land.
All right, thank you David. Frances?
Well, I do not disagree with any of this, but Stacy, I might get you right here, okay? What I want, my goal is action. All these ideas are wonderful. Collaboration's wonderful, somebody doing this, somebody doing that, and those could say somebody. I don't want to be that somebody that sits and listens. I want my meetings to have motions, and seconds, and things passed, and people assign the things, and then pick up that volume and run with it. I want people to be doing things. If they say, we're going to the county, hey, Frances, see, you're the liaison to the county commissioner's meeting, then Frances, see, better be at her behind at the county commissioner's meeting. And she reports back to that town board. Because all of these ideas are wonderful, and I'm surrounded by some very cerebral people, Stacy mentioned that a minute ago, we're smart. We're not any of us real young either, you know, we're not 18, at least I'm not. Trades are wonderful ideas, they're wonderful ideas, but wonderful ideas without legs in them are still just ideas. They're almost, you know, castles in the air. We've got to have action, and we've got to have people who are willing to be out there talking to someone else and say, hey, listen, the town council needs this. Well, I don't know, well, David then may know this about me, but I'm not afraid of anything but frauds, and especially not afraid to ask people for things. I ask people for things for my kids all the time. I do fundraisers and benefits where I'm not scared to ask for someone else, I'm not really afraid of anyone. I'll stand and fight in fact, I won't run. So I want action, that is my goal, is to be someone that's out there where people can say, Frances, see, hey, at this meeting, I want you to talk about such and such. Then I'll say to them, no, you come to the meeting and talk about such and such, and then discuss it with us. I want to be approachable, I want to be an action-based member of town council. Did I disagree with you Stacy?
No, I agree. Dylan was my third point.
Rebuttal? Anyone?
Is it not Jimbo co-coming?
Yeah, Jimbo let off, so weird.
Yeah, I do have a rebuttal, I'm disappointed that we didn't really disagree though. I totally agree with action, and I agree that we should be taking collaborative action. That's all I have to say. Next time, next time, let's find a good disagree.
All right.
I'm trying to move on.
Well, we've come to our final question. Fongai has it, Rita, it will lead off. How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town?
Well, first of all, I mean, I want them to know what the decisions are, what's facing the town. I've been somewhat disappointed to see how few people come to the town council meetings. There was a bunch when we were discussing the Nippon City Initiative, but there haven't been a lot of people that, in my experience, that come to town council meetings. So I think people need to know what the issues are. I love the working with the Franklin Press, Smoky Mountain News, and Macon County News. I mean, people have to know what the issues are before they can know what to give input on, so I...
Make a meeting.
Make a meeting, make a meeting. But anyway, I mean, people have to know what the issues are, and I will listen, I will, I mean, one of the things, I listen, I learn, and then I'm action-oriented. I am not, I certainly don't know it all, and I don't know it all at all about Franklin and where we are right now. I think that I will listen, I'll ask other people's opinion, I'll ask people where else they've had those, where else, and we brought this before the county council before. So I think it's about listening, and being sure that people know what the issues are that town council is dealing with. Our budget is excellent, the way it's laid out, walking around people can read that and see what the priorities are for the town. The sidewalks that David keeps mentioning, we need more sidewalks, but we also get a lot of that funding from the state with the taxes on gasoline, so we need to be very well, help educate our people about what we have, and what the issues are, and how they can be involved in giving input to the council. I don't want it to be one of those things where people say, you have to approach every council member individually, because as a group, they're not that receptive. So I want us to talk freely among council members and have a very strong outreach.
All right, thank you Rita. All right, Stacy, how do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town?
So one of the lessons that I learned, and I learned this when I was county planner, was that I used to think naively that decisions were made in a meeting. You know, you go in, people come in before the board, and they give good ideas, and then the board's going to take that, and they're going to make decisions based on that. And I learned from someone who was sort of a mentor to me during my service in Macon County, who said to me, she said, always listen to the people who aren't speaking. And in my career as, doing public outreach for a lot of these planning processes, what I've learned to do is to make sure that there's time to go out and meet with people individually. If you have the time, meet with people who represent certain groups, meet with people who wouldn't normally show up. That's one side to it, is making sure you reach out to the people who aren't there. The other side to it is, is another great thing about this office, is that as your council member, you're going to see me in the lot at the grocery store, you're going to see me on the streets during the festival, you'll see me at the restaurant, you'll probably see me here at Lacy Hiker. You'll be able to call me, email me, knock on my door, that's one of the great things about being so close to the people that you serve.
All right, thank you Stacy. David?
In the last four years, we've only had a few meetings with... In the last four years, we've only had a few meetings with a pretty big turnout and they were on hot button issues. One was, I think, some zoning changes in the Quosie District. One was the Quasi Initiative, the Indian mound. But another one that a lot of people showed up to was about 50 or 60 skateboarders showed up one night and advocated for a skate park. Well, that is in the works now. So I think people feel disheartened, especially because people will come to us with an issue and if it's not 50 deep, we just kind of rush it under the rug. One example of taking it to the people is a local brunch restaurant, had a very small restaurant and they wouldn't be able to serve a beer or Bloody Marys or whatever it was during their brunch service. And under a weird North Carolina state law involving alcohol, they have to have 36 indoor seats to be able to do that. And the town council can't change it. But what we could do, what we could have done is to put that on a referendum, on an actual election, to where you say, hey, do you want to go through this channel, channel four of allowing alcohol sales at a place that's less than 36 indoor seats? We didn't do that, but I think that's a prime example of the things that we can do to let the people tell us what they want to do. There's nothing more involved with the public in an election. So in the last 20 seconds, I would want to see more people at a meeting. Usually it means one of us or all of us are getting yelled at, but that's good. Like it's your town. It's not my town. It's not the council member's town. It's your town. Come talk to us. That's the only way to get change.
I need to mic this down.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I'm here, sorry.
Oh, did you show me your last two minutes?
You're like me. You're like me, David. You're the only one buying us.
There's so more out there.
You missed my moment, I either. Well, I, I kind of want to divert just a little bit. I would like for our town council meetings to be transparent. I mean, you know, I want people to come. But why is not every topic a hot topic for somebody? You know, the brunch might not have been a hot topic for Francis C., but it was a hot topic this. Why is every topic not a hot topic for somebody? Because it affects a group of people. I would like to see it livestreamed. I'd like to see those, and I hate to use this word, you know, remember my Facebook, social media. We have a page where people can, you know, on Facebook and these places where people can ask and people can find out when our meetings, or we can advertise our meetings, or we can say, see Rita Saline at the Winter Wonderland. She, you know, want to be there. Let, let people know what we're doing. I think advertisement there would be good. Also, town council, when, when people say, you run for town council, what is that? And they, they say, well, why didn't you run for county commissioner? I said, well, it's basically that for our town. So we want to be a driving force, not a back seat. You know, we want to be doing everything we can to let people know what's going on and for them to come in and feel welcome to come to our meetings, even if they just said, listen to us. I love how people listen to me, but you know, I teach stools, so you know, I'm fishing a barrel. But I want ideas to be brought to us so that we can take action on things. And I want people to feel comfortable coming to us, that we're not a hierarchy, we're not a, you know, the king in his court. We are people that are working for you. Our job is to serve you. And, and I think that would be where, where I stand on that.
All right. Thank you, Francis. All right, Jimbo.
George, can you repeat that question?
I'll repeat. How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town?
I would like to continue to use the resources we have available now to educate the public to the decision-making process in the town. To start with, the, the town does, they post a billboard up there by the town hall and I think there's some notice in the paper. So I would, I would like to do that. I also think the town could probably update their wireless capabilities there to make it easier for some of the local media channels to stream those meetings so that more people could see what's going on and be involved. You know, they're six o'clock on a Monday night, first Monday. That's not convenient for everybody. Not everybody can get here. You want to get the youth involved, but I don't know. It's a lot of 18 year olds on that car. So there's lots of ways. They have surveys that'll work good in the paper. They have petitions that you can go out depending on what's going on. There's a lot of different ways you get the town involved. I like what social media is doing nowadays as far as how you can get people involved. I like the podcasts. A lot of people are doing these podcasts now and having a lot of success with it because even if people aren't directly speaking and they are leaving comments and those comments can be filtered and later on you can come back and kind of get an idea of what people in the community are talking about, whether it's, you know, you're going to get some garbage, but it can be filtered out. It can be moderated. So there are lots of ways to get people involved and collect data on what your community wants if you're willing to step outside the box and, and do a little extra work. It does. And you have to make people feel involved, like you want to involve first. So I think the more that we can make it open to anybody would be a good start. So we do have to become more welcoming to everybody at the town meeting. So that's a good way to, to get input. That's where I'm at with that.
All right. Thank you, Jimbo. All right. We do have one more follow-up. Two more follow-ups.
No.
I just want to, I want to, speaking about these public meetings and some of the hot button issues, just share a, a lesson that I learned through the N'Quasi initiative process or the mound transfer process, which is, I'm really, that's some of the work that I'm the most proudest was working on behind the scenes to try to negotiate that, that transfer. And some of those meetings were really brutal and bloody. And some things were said, you know, about some of us personally that were, you know, upsetting, but you learn over the course of time to have a thick skin and, and let those things go. But in retrospect, I look back at that and I'm, I'm really thankful that those people cared enough about that place, cared enough about that mound to show up and, and to feel that kind of strong emotion. Because what's the alternative? The alternative is that no one cared about that place. And so sometimes there are two ways to, to look at that. That's just an aside, following up on your comment.
All right, Rita.
I think people will become more involved. I think the way that we'll get people involved is by them seeing action. And people will start coming to meetings if they think something actually happens at that meeting, that it's not basically just a reiteration of stuff that's already been decided. So I mean, people, if they think things are going on and they think that there's a reason to get to a meeting at six o'clock at night, they'll do it. So I think that the way that council has more, is more inviting, more people will accept that invitation.
All right. And I believe Francis has one more thing. We'll get to the closing statements.
In my experience, if you bring food burning, people come.
That's what Stuart said, sure.
I'll show up. Hey, the rest of them, huh? I want to showcase your talent.
Good idea. All right. Well, that's all of our questions. We're almost out of time, but we're going to give each candidate a minute to tell everybody why they should vote for, for each candidate. And I guess we'll start with
Whoever grabs the mic.
Whoever grabs the mic. Yep. It's right in front of you, David. Francis will start with one minute.
I was the one that said, wait, they'll, they'll come. So the reason I want to vote for town council is I want to do something. You know, I hope I've expressed that tonight. I want things to, to be different. I want a town council that's productive. I want to be a town council that's cohesive. We mentioned the other night that work together for common goals. Even if we disagree, we can disagree amicably and actually make a better idea. And then one of our ideas being is the bad part. The other thing I, we've not touched on that, which I really want to encourage anybody that hears this, please come out and vote if you can. Use your right. We don't have a whole bunch ever left right now. But use your right to come out and vote for any of these people for town council. Vote me first. Who wants to next? You're down.
All right, Jimbo. All right. Closing statement.
My name is Jimbo Lefferty and I would appreciate your vote. I believe I'd be a good fit for this position. A couple of the things that I didn't really get to touch on tonight that I do believe in are, we all talk about doing things for our, our kids and we, we do need to do things for our kids. But let's not forget who built those things and who was paid for those things, you know. There, we've got to focus on our older population too, because we're not getting younger. That's not how it works. Okay. In this population, this is our society, there's too many things that are disposable. Okay. I don't want to be added to that list. So we got to focus on our older population too. I'm very business friendly. I believe in small business and helping small business just as much as we help Walmart, please. So let's do that. What else I want to say is thank you for your vote. And if through some course of the worst case of voter fraud in recent history, just want to say to y'all, how you doing guys? Dave, don't forget, we play soccer again. There's Stacy, I know things about you.
Stop stealing. Stop stealing. I have a prop.
Oh, wow.
What number is that?
Nine.
That's a six from here. First, I want to thank Lazy Hiker for having us tonight. I may be the first Franklin Town Council candidate ever to drink a beer during a debate. It wasn't too much of a debate, but to me, that's clearly a six. To y'all, that is a nine, obviously. It's the same thing. Sometimes people just see things differently. And I love disagreement. I, I mean, I love nothing more than disagreement if the other person uses logic and reason to fuel their beliefs. I think it's healthy. I went to my son's JV soccer game or middle school soccer game today before I got here and our team was substantially better than the other team. It was seven to nothing or something like that. And I found myself going for the other team. I'm like, all right, come on, defense, you know, like let's, let's start beating the team that my son's on because that's a more healthy environment. I'll do that in meetings sometimes. If the board is very homogenous, I will turn devil's advocate. Just to try to see the other side of the argument, because if everybody sees things one way, you're missing something. You've got to spin it and look at it from a different light. That being said, my last thing, the youth don't vote. They can't vote and most of them are not involved. We need to be an advocate for them. They may not be loud. They may be silent. They don't have a voice at the booth. So somebody has to look out for them.
I think, Dave. Stacy, closing statement.
First of all, thank you guys, George and Dave. I was going to get him a target and we're getting a partner.
Yeah, sorry guys. Thank you.
I know that's your issue. And, and we talked about transparency before. Thank you, Bobby, for, for what you do for the community and making sure that all these events are, are live broadcasted. When I got, when we got done the other night, I was surprised by the number of people that called who'd been watching. My vote for me, I think I have the right experience. I have a, a record of getting things done and, and my heart's in the right place.
Thank you, Stacy. All right, Rita?
I am a hard worker. If I see a problem or an issue or a concern, I will listen, try to understand it. I'll learn and then I am very into getting it done, the action, what those steps are, and then evaluation. So, and see if what we intended to do is what we did do. So I, the reason to vote for me would be because I work very hard and I'm very interested in our town and I will put myself out there to learn whatever I can to make it a better place. I think that it is a good place to grow a new family, a young family, but it's also a great place to age in place. And we've got to have services that help the seniors be able to stay in their homes. Most seniors don't want to move. And so I think that we've got all kinds of different assets and different things that we can do. So the reason to vote, I hope for me, is because I will do the research and I'll do the work and then do the action. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rita. And that's going to wrap up our town council forum. I want to thank the fine folks here at Lazy Hiker for hosting tonight's event here in the, the back room. Hopefully we'll get out in the other area at some point. But we do appreciate them for hosting this event. Dave organizing it, getting everything together. As I call him, the mayor of Facebook. He keeps it, he keeps it straight on Facebook. Thanks to all the candidates for showing up. And November 2nd is election day. So go out and vote.
Early voting's already.
And early voting is already underway.
Let me say hello.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, y'all, for coming.
Thank you all for watching. I'll try to have an edited version of this up in a few days.
Good job, everybody.